So, we're gonna see if there's any public comment. And seeing that there appears to be none, let's go on to our facility subject discussion.
Okay, at the last meeting we had Terry Morris with DJM in the hearing to take a look at our acreage up here behind the district office to see whether or not it would be feasible to locate a drain field up in that vicinity. Terry was gonna go back and rework some of the bruise and take a look at the site to make a determination as to what the costs would look like in that area. And so what you have before you today is summary, a four-sheet, four-page summary that talks about placing what is called a high school drain field, and that is the current drain field is currently in failure, and to construct a new high school drain field up on the district lands up here behind the district office to connect the elementary school to the north existing lift station and to take items two and three together so that we can move everything up here in the district office. And then there is item five, which is items two and three drain field only. So I'm gonna allow Terry to go ahead and run through and explain all of this to you. And then with that, if you have any questions during this discussion, I'm sure we'll have answers.
Would you like to write on the whiteboard tonight? Would that be helpful to you?
Okay, alright.
What I'm gonna do first is just give you, and I'll pass these around so you can look at them. This is a drain field that isn't a trench, you know, it's a regular mild drain field. It's actually for wastewater, but it's the same look. You put gravels down here, and you lay these pipes out where they're gonna be, and then you lay these over the top. And as you put these little four-foot pieces together, you're hooking the pipe to the top. I don't like the pipe I'm laying on the ground, you gotta hook it to the top. So that's kind of how it looks laid out. Then what you do is now you've got them all laid out, and you run the manifold down the middle that connects each way. You put the end caps on so that you can blow them out if you need to, and then you cover them up with something. We covered it up with gravel material, and then they were gonna put sod over the top of that. And this is at the wetupna, you can recognize some of this stuff. And right off the side of that building, in the area where they weren't gonna allow people to play or picnic or anything like that. And that's to get rid of all the stormwater out of that parking lot that was getting really a little problem. Now, the first thing I guess that I'll talk about, and I don't know how much detail we need to go into, and you can ask questions, whatever, but the number one item is to replace the high school drain field at its current location. That's the one we talked about the other night that was a hundred thousand dollars. And you'll notice on my sheet here, my summary sheet, it's 123. John asked me to include sod that I didn't have on that first one, so when I put sod out there, that jumped, that's why that number's higher, to do that. I can go through, and I'll just go through these first, and then you can ask me any individual questions that you like. Now, if we wanted to construct that exact same drain field, just dealing with the high school, the 6,400 gallons up there, and how we decided where, we walked this, I had another engineer and I came down, and we walked this once, and then we walked it with John once, and then we looked over some other things. Up in that corner of your property, because it's kind of an L shape like this, in that corner, I took a 40-foot area off each property line approximately, and then stuck the drain field in there. And then figured some other things, and I'll show you a picture up here in a minute. But that's where it is. But the point here is, is that the two numbers to compare is the 123,000 down there versus the 226,000 up there. They're identical, other than now we've got a lift station down there, and the dosing tank is up here, and we've got the pipe going up to it. That's the difference in cost. So that's what it would take. Now, the reason, the other thing is, is to connect the elementary school to this system. And I think last time we talked, I indicated if there's the same number of kids, because I, my understanding is, after looking at the website, you've got about 900 kids?
About 830.
Eight thirty? Okay. My number was 460, and I recalculated based on a different amount of liquid than another 460 would generate, because they don't have a gym, they don't have showers, and they don't have a cafeteria, and that's all in the other one. So that reduced it quite a bit. A third, two-thirds is kind of the total flow now, okay? So if I do take that flow, I have to put a 6,000-gallon septic tank, which basically means you don't need any of the other ones, but you're still gonna have one in line, the one that's up underneath that building over there. We'll just leave that there. Even if we have to go in and pipe it through it, we'll do something. But we put a new 6,000-gallon drain field there, and then put a six-foot diameter. I need some emergency storage, so I'm probably gonna end up with a six-foot diameter lift station, just that side of the septic tank. And the reason I need the emergency storage is if power goes out, you're still getting suds in there. And you're gonna need sewage, and then you're gonna need some hours to make sure you've got enough so you can get it fixed before something happens, okay? Then I run up, from there, I just run a pipe over to the existing, I shouldn't point that way, over to the existing dosing manhole right now, which will become, if it moves up there, it'll become a lift station at that point. I figured that the type of pumps we're gonna need in there are going to be, I've got three half-horse pumps right now in the dosing manhole, we're gonna need one horse pumps, two of them, in that manhole, because I, and I couldn't find my exact number, but it's 50 or 6 feet, 50 or 60 feet difference between there and up there. So just to overcome that head, and I'll probably end up, I was hoping to get by with a three-inch line, but I might end up having to go to four-inch, because the pumps, I wanna get at least 100 to 150 gallons a minute. That's the flow I need to get up there each time. And I'll just take the pumps that are there, move them up there with the rails and all the floats and all that stuff. Take the control panel, floats, the rails, pumps, go up. Now, in order to do that work over here, a new septic tank, a new lift station, and 300-foot line, you know, that's just the amount that's needed there. That's $87,000. And my thought there is, and again, I'm kinda getting a little ahead of myself, assuming that we're gonna move that one, at least, is we would do that at the very beginning of this project this summer, so that we get it tore up, possibly fixed up, maybe a gravel, but hopefully asphalt, so that there's no digging or anything there when the kids get here. Because we are definitely going at least two months beyond September. September, October, possibly some November, in order to do the other project. So I wanna get that done, so the kids just, when they get here, they can still run back and forth and all this kind of stuff. Maybe a little bit gravelly, but do it that way. Then I would come out of the dosing manhole down there, we'd leave everything operational, and put in the line and the drain fields and everything up there, and we'd come back down, put in the new man, manhole, uh, manhole, septic tank over there, because I need another septic tank also, and then reconnect everything up. It would take a day, could be a weekend when you don't have a game or something going on, but just a weekend. And have that in the spec so that the contractor knows he's gotta do it in a certain way. Because the two things that affect him on this are putting in that septic tank, lift station, and 300 feet from the elementary school, and then just sitting it there. Don't cook it up. That's just gonna run like it is right now until the end. Then we're gonna come back and dig a hole in one morning, one afternoon, connect the pipes, close it up. Now, it depends on if you wanna take anything out of the ground. I mean, if you want those manhole lids and stuff taken out, or if you wanna just kind of bust them out and then fill them with sand, you should pump them out first, fill them with sand, and then compact them and put asphalt, new asphalt, so you don't have a bunch of manholes out there to look at. We re, we did relook at those again, and the gentleman I brought with me doesn't think that the manhole that I told you about that has a pump in it has to do with the sewer. He thinks it has to do with stormwater. And, and he's right, there was no smell. And there was certainly a difference from looking in this septic tank from looking in there, a huge difference.
Where's that manhole you're talking, which one?
It's on the south.
Right on the south side?
Yeah. There's a, there's a couple of valves that say valves on them, and we can't get those open, those lids. But there's a, there's a septic tank, that's very obvious, that's what it is. It has a filter, and then, and then right down 10 feet away from it is a manhole that has a little pump in it, just one. And I don't know what it pumps or where it pumps to, no clue.
It's operational?
I don't know that either. It may just come into there and then gravity out somewhere and then disappear.
What do you think this, what do you think it is?
It'd probably be from roof drains, I guess. But I, I don't know. The gentleman that was here last time indicated that he might have some drawings that he could show me, and it may have something on there, because if he put this thing in, or his father, this is so close that they would've hadn't known it on there, that that's what, there's something else there, unless it got put in later.
So all the digging and where you come under the highway, if we did that, where would that be, on this end of the building here?
The digging that we would be doing. What I have here is from here, can you see my finger? Out to the student parking lot, and I went to the very far one, just because I didn't think the asphalt over there was quite as good, and I know I can get easily through there. We could save some pipe by doing it a little different, I'm just trying to get cost. And then cross the road. And then go down this side of the road, and then go up behind the trailers, and all the way up to there. And those six little boxes up there, that's the six drain fields. And that area that's kind of a trapazoid, that's the influence zone, and that should be on your property. And so if it is in fact like these down here that are all lined up this way, and that means they go that way, you know, the underground stuff goes, the water direction, then I put this the same way, and so that would be about where it is. If we find during the design that it's skewed a little, maybe it goes more towards, a little bit towards the creek, we may have to move that over a little.
So the question on the influence zone, can you build a building in that, or any structure in that?
Do you want, do you want...
Because I know that that leads into the prime chunk of the property for eventual development in the future. So I guess my, my thought is, if you can't put a structure in there, then maybe this drain field would be better off instead of the northwest corner of this property to the southwest corner of the property down closer to the ball fields. Because I know that this, this section right here is where, you know, this is the prime large chunk of land, what can you build in there?
What I did is I, what DEQ usually goes by is 500 feet, and that's what that represents, is a 500-foot long influence zone. And I haven't in the past been able to get away with 200 feet, I even got away with 100 feet once. It just depends on soil characteristics and some other things of what the soil can do. So it doesn't, that's the maximum length that it would be. But I think you could probably put a building there, as long as it didn't have a basement. If you want a basement, then I'd say no. That, that isn't a good place for it, if you want a basement.
But you might have this gray water gravitating under the building.
But it does go down. It doesn't just go like this, it, it goes down. So it's quite a ways under. I'm just saying, and my thought is, is you probably don't wanna do a basement, although you might be able to, depending on how, how that goes. I haven't done any, any exploration of how that would look.
Well, that brings you a good point, because I remember last time we were discussing, Pat here saying that we had this so-called like a daydream or whatever of this new facility that we were discussing. Where, where was the thought of putting that facility when all that was being discussed? Right in this area?
Yeah, it's right in this area, yes, because it's from this red fence to that red fence, gone up through here, and then this parking lot would be a multi-use parking lot, possibly a road coming off of here for buses to drop off, one-way road to come out this way for buses, and possibly cul-de-sac here, so that parents would come in and drop their kids off at the start, if they had a sewer.
So I mean, because I know we, I mean, went as far as had, I remember we approved drawings for that for a large sum. Did they have any civil or underground included in where, when, under this design, when, where were they planning on putting a new sewer if we had a new facility?
They didn't have, they didn't go into that kind of depth with, with this design.
We only got architectural?
We only got architectural.
I have a question.
And that was for that part?
Does this particular zone have to be on the downgrade from, from here? So it couldn't go this way? Okay. And that makes sense, I just...
And I think if we move this over towards the baseball diamonds and had that same look, what we would end up doing with a 500 footer is we would end up on their property. And that you don't wanna do either. So then the...
You're not allowed to, are you? Or do you have to get an easement?
Well, they don't like to do it that way, but yes, you could get an easement. And that has a lot to do with their well, which is over here, unless there's another one somewhere that we don't know about, you know, that sort of thing. But you, you would come across, I'm just trying to think, this well's like right in here someplace, I think. I think your building is kind of, maybe it's here. Your well's kind of right there. So if we moved over even a little bit, you know...
Get close to the mixing zone.
Right. We could get, you know, get the mixing zones what came out right there, and it wouldn't be a problem.
I have a question. Would you foresee any problems where you have to have a bend in it like that?
No.
It would never be anything that would... What about, this comes across onto the west side of the highway? Would you have to take out that walking path and everything?
I really, I didn't even know there was walking path there. I drove by there and I didn't realize it. If it was, if it was easier to do and less costly, we could come over here and go across. I just was gonna try not to mess up the school.
Okay, and this particular, this part right here isn't the school's property?
No.
So that would be an easement?
No, I, I think we're gonna do it in the right of way.
In the right of way, okay, that's what we have.
That would be in the right of way. It looked to me like there's a 66-foot piece there.
And this road here, someday might get used.
And that's fine, that's not over the drain field. It can be over the influence zone.
Oh, okay. So when you say influence, you're saying emergency, I mean, is that...
That's where the, the effluent goes down through the soil, and it gets cleaner and cleaner and cleaner, cleaner and cleaner, and then right here at the end, it's really clean. And so you could have a well right here.
Now, you talked about there not being any room with, with one on the elementary school side, this, that little one, an emergency zone. Isn't that what you call it?
It's, it's an alternate drain field.
Alternate drain field. So is this, is this also an alternate drain field for this?
I would probably draw that in right next to it.
Okay, so it doesn't have to be as huge as this?
No.
Okay.
So all these trees would be gone?
No.
In this area?
Nope. Just the trees, it would be gone, but just be the ones there.
Just there, okay.
And it really would, I walked up there, and it looked pretty nice as far as taking the trees out, not necessarily getting, getting rid of them, you know, somebody would come in and take them out for you for free, but then they'd get them. Is, I'd like to put those around the boundary of the drain field, because the worst thing that happens is you have a car go in there. You know, jump off the road, spin around, and do a bunch of stuff. I like to keep those nice big trees.
They'd never do that.
Oh, okay. Then we can sell.
So this isn't the emergency, or what did you call it, the alternative, the second whatever?
Yeah.
This is, okay, this is where it's draining down.
Yeah.
If we go to this plan across the road?
If we go to this plan across the road.
You're talking, we have, in the, so there'll be one lift station, unless we have to connect the, the south existing, or two lift stations. Who maintains those lift stations throughout that?
Your maintenance person.
Our maintenance.
Okay, now, here's the next question. Okay, let me look here. If we just did the high school drain field that you compromised right now, and then pumping it across, would we have to connect that, this elementary one yet? So this 87,000, that isn't, that's, that's to get the waste from there up there? Doesn't have anything to do with us connecting the other drain field to this system?
No. The way I priced it was, the six something that I show here is actually enough to deal with both systems. There's enough space there, enough area to deal with both. So, and it's kind of difficult to say I wanted to increase the size by a third, so what I'm saying is, under this first, the second number, 226, that included a space this long for the laterals to go out. And if you add the elementary school, you're gonna need this much more space. So you're gonna have to dig up at the end of that and add pipes on each one of those for this much. And that total was $21,070. That's what that was meaning right at that last one, is drain field only. If there's any way you could come up with an extra $27,000, $21,000, I would certainly recommend that you just get the drain field done, because the pumps will be available to, to deal with it when it hooks on. Pipeline will deal with it when it hooks on, the lift station will deal with it when it hooks on, and you just won't hook it on yet.
It'll all be there, and it'll all be the right size.
Yeah. And that, the, the number then would be approximately $250,000 to do the number two plus the drain field. I did, I kinda did it that way, just so you, although, you know, if you look at it, 87,000 minus 21, that's only 60,000 more, jeez, let's do it. But maybe that's not what you wanna do. I ain't giving you that option.
Well, Crepes is only money, right?
Okay, I have a question from John. No reserves, and I know, I know this differs every year, but if we were to decide on number four and did the whole thing for 313,000, now that doesn't give us, does that give us any contingency for overrunning or under...
There, there is contingency in here, and incidentally, all of my numbers here should be high. I really would not expect these to be low. Somebody isn't gonna come in more than 313,000.
You're saying your contingency about 10%?
Yes. 10%.
So your question is...
How long does it take? I mean, right now we're sitting at 500,000. That would leave us a little less than 200,000. How long does it take, would it take us to build that back up to the five hundred?
We were about where we would be at the end of this.
When you came?
When I came, so it was, it took about eight years of, you know, getting end-of-year monies that we could stick into the reserves, because we were, you know, we were dedicated to trying to build that up in the event. But I will say this, I spoke with the auditor today, in the debt service fund for the building bond issue, we have collected taxes on people who protested taxes, so they're being taxed for the new building, and we paid that building off. But we still, they're paying their taxes delayed to us, because they protested. We have about $80,000 there, and the auditor has told us, get it out of the debt service, put it into a functional line. You can stick it in a tech fund, you can stick it in a building reserve fund. So the idea is, you can stick that into the building reserve fund, and then you can use building reserve fund dollars from that monies to help with this project if needed.
That makes it feel a little better.
So I mean, that is something that we just learned today from the auditor.
So you say, when you came here eight years ago, we had about 200K in reserve, and over eight years, we added an additional 300,000, approximately, approximately.
Terry?
Yeah?
High school drain field down here, and hook up the elementary down here. Could you enlarge the high school a little bit and then run the elementary over there? No?
I had to enlarge it by a third, and I mean, I'm, I'm using that old area, if you look at this, this whole area right there by the sidewalk, right now. So I'd have to increase it by a third, which would put me over here.
You'd be in both, both pieces of the playground there, right?
I mean, I, I shouldn't have said I can't. There is some space to do it, but you're just taking more of your area. And then you would abandon the other, and you'd have about a fourth maybe, at the most of your, uh, what do you mean a fourth? Maybe a fifth of your grass area out there that wouldn't have a drain field under it.
But we, not, not just in case there was something that went wrong, and maybe we're borrowing trouble there, maybe the elementary will function for a while.
I know there was one time last year, I believe it was about a year ago, when some child got into a little bit of water over here, a little wet, supposedly, according to dentists, over there underneath one of the, the soccer ba, uh, not baskets, nets. It's a real dugout area, you know, where they kind of squipped back in there and do a lot of this. It's this much lower than, than the rest of it. There was some water in there. And although nobody smelled it on the child, supposedly he went home, and then somebody said that he could've been, had some, or he could've had some on him. So I, I mean, I don't know that that field, that drain field did that, but it just kind of makes me nervous, because it's right there. I mean, it's, the la, one of the laterals is right back at that spot.
Well, what I'm thinking, several, several of us remember, we tried to get a municipal sewer system in here one time, about 12 years ago, which was a mighty fine idea probably, and it still would be a good idea. So if we got into all this expense to get up here, and that, and this would last 30 years, that might happen in 30 years. If we just fixed it down here, maybe, maybe, just maybe, a sewer system would be required in this town within that much time, which, if we had been up here, then that's not necessary anymore. Whatever sewer system we'd have wouldn't be necessary.
I know that, I've talked to some people from DEQ about when this happened, where you went through all the engineering and all this stuff, spent a lot of money on that. And by not taking that money, you basically are at the end of the line, because a lot of other people got to use it, and they gave it to you, and you had a project to use it, and you did it, and you're at the end of the line. So it is gonna be a while before you would get that type of, of large system.
Offer, yeah.
I mean, you'd end up with, you're gonna have to jump through several loops, have some additional costs associated with it, and by the time, in 20 years, that cost is gonna have gone up 50% at least, just to do it. And who knows what's gonna happen, where they were gonna put it out here as far as somebody else buying it, not interested in dealing with it. You might even, I mean, if you're talking 30 years, you're probably gonna have to go to a mechanical system. And those are expensive.
Well, yeah, well, I'm just thinking, you know, the density is, is growing around here. And sooner or later, it might come to it, or you don't have a choice.
Or you have to start not having people subdivide lots because you don't have any more. I mean, they're gonna be moving out of town and building and then working in town or something like that. But I don't know that you'll get very many people in town to do it. I would certainly hope that the next time you would go with a system like that. Something big, I mean, I was quite a, quite astounded.
Yeah. What's, what is the, what's a long time, do you figure? Twenty, thirty years?
For what?
To get, get that offer again for some money to build that.
I think the...
Yeah, municipal sewer system.
Oh, I would say it would probably be at least ten, if not twenty. That's what I'm thinking. And you're gonna have to have more money than you put in on it or that you borrow and pay interest on rather than get grants, because they gave you quite a bit of grant money. And that may not do as mu, I don't mean they would give you something, they would give you something but not, not as much. Especially if the price of it goes up fifty percent. I mean, I don't remember what the cost of that whole thing was, a couple, three million dollars?
It was about four.
Four? And that included all the main lines in town. That's not getting any cheaper at all. And the, the treatment facility part of it is definitely not getting any cheaper just because there aren't, there aren't areas to do it in that you can, you know, keep. Somebody's not gonna keep it for you unless you maybe have a spot of land right up there that you can do something with it.
Yeah, well, I just, I just thought I'd throw that in there that, because a person would hate to spend a bunch of money and then it's not something you need in ten, fifteen years when you could get by with, for twenty or thirty down here or maybe even a little longer, so. I just, but it's, it's a gamble. I understand that.
I know that the, if, if they did come in here in ten, fifteen years and try and get somebody to do a sewer, you wouldn't be required to connect to it. If you're, if you aren't having any problems, which I guarantee you're not gonna have any problems in ten or fifteen years. You're just gonna keep doing your thing. You're not gonna get assessed or anything. I suppose maybe you wouldn't anyway because you're a school. But you would not have to connect. You'd just have to keep going. And even if you built a new building up here, you've got an existing system that's, that would be sized or whatever, you got nine hundred kids down here, you got a thousand in the future, maybe you add a couple of cells or something and you connect to it.
So it's, it's, can be added on too? And this, you say, is not gonna interfere with a building site?
Yeah. It depends on what the building site is. If you've...
But aren't many schools that have, no, I shouldn't, I shouldn't say that. You said it would, it would be a problem if there was a basement?
And typically, schools have at least a portion of their building in a basement. Their mechanical rooms, some of that kind of stuff is almost always in a basement. Uh, the gymnasium a lot of times is built down a little bit, so it doesn't have to be so high type of thing. I'm not saying that that is the ideal spot. That's just where we looked and it looked like it would work. I could check out some other areas. Uh, I could at least move it over halfway. I could move this, this over to here. Now, if that would help you a lot or if you need all of this, right where my hand is, then there is a problem. Because I, I'm not gonna have enough for that room.
Well, don't we have drawings on this existing building that we were talking about building? Which is square foot of it, how big is it?
Well, I think at that point, it was just an elementary building. But it's hard to say what, what that building would be if in fact it would be an elementary building or a high school or...
Wasn't it, what was, what was it? What did we draw? What do you, I mean, CTA, they're gonna pay twenty-five thousand bucks for it.
K-five elementary building.
K-five elementary only, that was it?
Mm-hmm.
How big, what did you guess?
We do have to, I've got enough cabinet we have.
I mean, obviously, I mean, it's, try to go somewhere. I mean, it, it seems to me like you're saying we could, we could definitely move it here or there. It's not really gonna have that big of effect on your new facility. You can work with it and we have enough land, we have enough, I don't know.
The only thing you don't have enough is over there by the baseball.
Right, going to that one.
You just don't have the, the depth.
Right. But the influence zone, you're saying you can use for what, I mean, whatever, right?
Whatever, basket, I mean, football fields, I mean, any kind of stuff like that. That, that's not a problem.
It looks like seventy percent of this is influence zone that I'm looking at.
Yeah. Yeah, I think the influence zone is five hundred feet and the, the other ones is a hundred and sixty feet, something like that?
Okay.
Well, I think, I mean, I don't know, I can't remember exactly, but I think that area that's over by the park, the thought was that that area could be used for playground, you know, those kinds of things, since it wasn't big enough for an actual, I mean, be, because of the way that the bus route was gonna come in, it worked better for the building to be down here than over here. So as far as having a system right over there, that, that's good if we could still use this existing piece of ground right here to build on at, at some point.
And that, that would just mean that part of your building, the part that's there, I, I wouldn't necessarily say you'd want to have a basement there. But you got area this side, you got area this side that you could have basement on any of that.
Build up, go up.
Could do that too.
Well, that's quite a little distance up there though, where that influence field's.
Yeah, it is. There is still a nice chunk of land that's down here.
You have.
Yeah, because the parking lot's there, so this is like almost three times the, three of the parking lots to get to it. And like I say, I just put it in there as five hundred. I didn't really have the time to call many people to get this out, so. It, it may be able to be reduced. That's all something we gotta see.
I just can't imagine any buildings clear up there. You'd want to stay fairly close to the highway.
Yeah.
And the parking lot. Doesn't want a square foot.
Okay, so if we do the whole thing, we're looking at three-hundred-and-thirteen thousand. And you're saying that you could do the eighty-seven thousand job before school starts? I mean, all of that, so that's dug up and whatever and covered over by the time school starts. The rest of it, we could be working on the next fall. And then in the meanwhile, we still have...
You mean this fall, this coming fall?
Yes, yes, yeah, this coming fall. And in the meanwhile, we still have the, that particular part of our drain field roped off because we haven't done anything with that yet.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Well, I guess the two first things that we would have, require the contractor to do would be put in the septic tank over here, put in the other septic tank, put in the lift station, do the piping over to it and then do the piping and not connect to any of the new, the old system yet. And then connect out and go up to the, to the road and cross the road. Now he can pave. That's all he needs to do to pave. Then anything else is not paved.
And so did you find out, so, so we're drilling underneath the, because it is the state highway?
Well, my, my, the guy that was with me, he doesn't think you'd have to go underneath. But I told him about the fiber optics and he says, well, maybe they've got it deal where you have to. But I've got like, I think I got a hundred, uh, let me, let me just find my number. Nine thousand dollars.
Bore it under the highway.
Bore under the highway. Now, you're gonna have to replace asphalt and you won't get all that nine thousand back. But I've also continued my pipe cost as if you're just doing pipes, so I'm gonna save a little there.
Well, with the addition of the eighty thousand dollars, I'm feeling a whole lot better about the fact that we put that back into the reserve fund. Kobe's absolutely right. We have struggled with this for years and years and years and years. I, I don't have a problem fixing the existing one, but then you're telling us that the elementary is, it's a crapshoot. It's gonna go at some point because it's older than that one and Lord knows when that's gonna happen. So with that, I make a motion that we go with the number four, which is the line two and line three for three-hundred-and-thirteen thousand dollars, which would be, tell me again, lower high school drain field being routed to the, what, what corner was that?
Northwest, or some other place up there.
Right, okay. The eighty-seven thousand, that would be the lift station that would pump the waste to the pipes up to the new drain field that we have here. Did I miss anything?
It looks like you got it.
All right. That's my motion.
Well, second.
Okay, so now we have discussion. So this is just a dumb question. So for three-hundred-and-thirteen thousand, we don't get, we're not doing anything to the elementary school except?
Yeah.
We are. That is, that's, that's abandoning that and fixing whatever we end up getting in the hole. So that's the whole shebang?
Whole shebang.
Okay.
It's all us doing, just far west as we can.
Okay, all right.
And the one thing it, that it doesn't do is we would just leave all the drain fields, everything in place, except for the south one. You probably want to take off some of those lids and, you know, fill them. But the drain field over here, even though there's, there's chambers underground, the picture I showed you with those chambers, some contractor would have to clean and power wash them. He's gonna say, forget it, I'm buying new ones. I'm not gonna do that. So we're gonna leave everything in the ground. That's what I planned. There won't be anything taken out. I mean, once we switch this over, you take a rope down. I mean, it's pretty much that simple.
It guarantees no more ponding on our playground.
No sewage.
Surface water.
Right, but I mean, exactly, sewage ponding on it.
It catches nothing coming into it. Correct. And we would shut off, you know, plug every, every pipe and valve and stuff like that.
It would be nice not to have any problems like. We've had that for years. Pop it under every once in a while. Because I was working there when, when Bob O'Brien put in the new sewer thing over by the little building and there were lifts and a whole bunch of stuff they had to do. And that's probably been twenty years ago.
Well, I, I'd like to say I think this is a permanent fix. I couldn't agree more with the way we're spending our money and finally putting an issue to this sewer system. It's been, it's been ongoing for a long time. Couldn't, couldn't agree more.
So the, so the other piece of the puzzle is, if we get to putting a building over here, then we've already got this over here sized. And if we need to add a few chambers or whatever we need to do, we're still, we're still over here using this if we build a building across the street here. So.
And I would, I guess I would assume, I've got this size now for four-hundred-and-sixty kids. So that's nine hundred and some kids. So if you're down back to eight fifty, I think the kind, the internet said you were at nine hundred, but you know, if you, that's kind of where you're gonna be fluctuating. I don't, do you foresee that you're gonna be up to a hundred and twenty?
Hundred and twenty.
Hundred and twenty more students where we're at right now?
Yeah.
It's gonna be a few years.
Somebody'd have to come in and put in some sort of jobs.
How much, what are you talking, you say your size for nine hundred and some? What, what's the next size up? What are you talking?
The way I've calculated the flows, it's based on four-hundred-and-sixty kids there and four-hundred-and-sixty kids there, but they're different. And they have, each have a different flow.
Including staff and everybody and all?
Including staff, that's correct. So if, if you built a new elementary up there, you wouldn't have an elementary down here anymore. So you would have room for more students if that's what you think you'd have. If you get more students than the nine hundred and whatever that number is.
Well, I think probably if in fact, of course, I could be wrong, if we were to build a new building over here, those, this building down here would probably still be used some by some students. So it's definitely there would be as, I don't think the numbers would be as much, but there would be still to be used coming from those buildings.
And at that point in time, you would want to expand the drain field whatever you needed to. And it certainly wouldn't have to be doubled at all.
Okay. All right, so I guess we're calling for the question. And anything else, Bill?
Well, if that's going uphill, is there a check valve or something? If his power goes out the wrong time, can then go shoot it back?
That's one of those deals where typically, I put a drain field so it flows back, so it's always empty. That way in the summertime or whenever when you don't use it, stuff just doesn't sit in there. Uh, on this particular one, because we're probably gonna go to a four-inch, that's a lot of, lot of liquid. And you're always gonna use it some in the summer. But I would say there would be at least one check valve. There'd probably be, there'd be at least one check valve for each pump that's down here, each of the two.
Good question. So this kind of explains why the trailer court doesn't let anybody play on that ground, right? Is that where they're draining?
Is that where it is?
It must be. They don't let anybody on that ground.
Oh, they're in the center of it?
In the center of the trailer.
Oh, is that right?
Well, I think, along by what you're saying, I guess that's what that is, because we've got all these trailers.
And I don't know what that is.
But they never let...
They don't let people out there?
Uh-uh, for any reason. And I'm thinking that that's where they have their drain field.
Could be.
All right, so I guess, any, any, any further discussion? And I'm gonna call for the question. So I guess we're gonna go, we're gonna vote here on Mickey's motion to do the whole shebang. So, all those in favor? I voted one. Okay, so here we go. Thank you very much. Thank you for your time and efforts and issues. Do you need this back?
No.